Work session of the Southampton Town Board to order on this fourteenth day of September 2023, please rise and join me for the pledge of allegiance. My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Cindy, would you call the roll?
Certainly. Supervisor Schneiderman.
I'm here.
Councilwoman McNamara.
Here.
Councilwoman Martel.
Here.
Councilwoman Bubie is not with us today. Councilman Skivoni.
Present. So, yeah, so Councilman Bubie has an excused absence from today's meeting. Janice, actually, if you can track me down a pen so I can take some notes.
You need a pen?
That's all right.
There you go.
I just washed that. Hand sanitizer.
Oh, boy.
Sterilize.
Also, I could use an iPhone charger if you could track one down, too.
Okay.
Take a pen, thank you.
All right.
You will.
So, um, let me, let me start out this morning with just sort of some breaking news, so, um, breaking in the form of waves. And so we're, Hurricane Lee has shifted a bit to the west. And it's a significant event in terms of coastal erosion potentially. So, uh, we're seeing, we just went through high tide cycle and, um, the next high tide, at least in the Shinnecock Inlet area along the ocean, is going to be around eight tonight. Um, I've spent the morning out there with, with Highway, with County DPW, with Ryan Murphy, with Chief Kirnann, and with others, Aram Tertunian. There is a spot, um, sort, just to the west of Tyana Beach, actually closer to Sandbar Beach, if you know where that is, just to the east of Sandbar Beach, um, where there is sort of a missing section of dune to begin with. There's a, there's a house that's on pilings and the dune sort of doesn't really exist much. And the waves were really just rushing right underneath that structure, creating a bit of a river to the bay. Um, you know, it was described to me as a breach this morning, a, a bad breach. I, I don't know technically if it's a breach. I would say it's, it's, it's a washover, but it is certainly pre-breach conditions. If we don't do anything, it, it'll, you know, by tonight, it will be a breach. And breaches, as the board's aware, can expand very quickly. So, once you have that rush of water through and you have the pressure from the bay pushing out, um, a, a small breach can turn into a very large breach. There is a number of structures in that area. So, I have declared a state of emergency, a localized state of emergency in that area so that we can do everything we can. I've reached out to the county, County Executive, to get the equipment that we need. We, we have large truckloads of sand already being brought into that area and is being placed on, I think, in front of this home and behind this home to, to shore that up. I'm sorry, Charlie?
Yes.
Oh, you need Janice? Okay. So, um, I didn't ask if Charlie was filming. I'm assuming he is. So, um, so we, we are doing everything we can to prevent it from getting worse in that area. Dune Road is closed, um, large sections of Dune Road are closed. Not all of Dune Road is closed. We really don't want anybody getting hurt. We don't want anybody interfering with our ability to move that sand into place quickly. There are other areas we're monitoring. You know, we had done a, a flyover just last week, um, so we have pretty good reconnaissance in terms of what the shoreline looks like and where the vulnerable spots are. I'm particularly concerned about the area by the commercial dock and where the, there's a lot of wave activity currently. The dune is very narrow and steep and not, um, it, it doesn't have the stabilized effect that the roots would have if it were, um, a, a, a dune that had been there for a long time. It's basically, it's a dune that was created fairly recently with a lot of loose sand, going back just a year or two, um, when we had that major issue on Dune Road. So, it's, it's a dune that could easily wash out, and I expect it will. So, we're looking to stockpile significant amounts of sand in the area of the commercial dock, both east and possibly west of the commercial dock, so that we have some material there, because we don't have material to rebuild it currently, so, uh, very little. So, we're going to try to use the next hours between now and the high tide. And it's not just tonight's high tide. This storm isn't technically here, right? So, we're expecting it to arrive, uh, late Friday and go through Saturday. But we're already seeing significant erosions. We're expecting the wave heights to double. We're seeing seven-foot waves right now. We're expecting fourteen-foot waves. So, um, there is a sort of, an offshore sandbar that should dissipate some of that wave energy and should help us a little bit. But we're also, you know, have to look at areas like Pike's Beach. We have to look, you know, um, on the east side of the Canal Two, in those ECD areas. So, um, I'm in consultation with Aram and others, and we're going to closely monitor this situation. It has the potential to, you know, not only bring a lot of rain and wind and flooding and power outages, but the most, the most significant things that we're concerned about is coastal erosion and a very dangerous, potentially lethal rip current, riptide. Um, and so, we'll be, uh, obviously in touch with Parks Department and Bay Constables and doing everything we can, uh, you know, to try to keep people out of the water. So, uh, because, you know, people may not understand these rip currents and how lethal they are. I actually have a friend who lost her daughter, who was a, um, a college athlete, um, in a, in a rip current, got, got pulled out. This is somebody who was a great swimmer, who drowned in a riptide. So, um, if, if people think that maybe it's okay to, to go in the water, it's not, it's not okay. Even, even the best swimmers can, can drown in those conditions. So, um, we're going to do what we can. What I wanted the board to be is we're, uh, fully aware of the current conditions. All right. Um, with that, let's go to the first item on our agenda, um, 424 North Sea Road LLC. We have Janice Scherer, our Town Planning and Development Administrator, and we have, uh, Jim, uh, we have Judge Burke at Burke, um, from Burke and Sullivan, who's a former judge, uh, who is also here, and I guess representing the property owner?
Yes, Mr. McCully cannot be here, so Mr. Burke is here. If you show any questions.
Okay. That's the best we could do for substitution.
Slumming today.
Yeah, slumming it. All right. So, Janice, do you want to introduce yourself?
Sure. Thank you, everyone. Good morning. Um, this is our new, you know, you, you undertained one, one of these so far, the Dan's Papers on Camera Thirty-Nine, one non-conforming use to another, if you remember. This is the second one we've had. Um, this is, I have it up on the screen, and you can give an aerials. It's an existing use. It was previously a plumbing and electric, um, special trade contractor, and they're looking just to change their tendency to, um...
It was lawnmower repair before.
Lawnmower, yeah.
Then, then a plumbing outfit.
I'm sorry, right.
When you say it's non-conforming, what's its zone as?
It's R-20.
Really?
Yeah.
That's a tough spot for residents, because nobody would want to live there.
It's a very tough spot. So, this process, you know, you could say, hey, this should be HB or something, or you...
Is the property, the other commercial property that it joins it, that's zoned also residential?
They're all R-20, but across the street diagonally is HB.
That's right.
Which one? This house?
Across North Sea Road.
Of course.
Where your thumb is, that's the, that's the Southampton Fire Department piece or Fire District, uh, and just to the south of that is, is HB.
Okay. And so, this, what's it CO'd for right now?
Hold on, lines?
They have a number of variances going back to nineteen sixty.
Oh, yeah?
It's a tough spot, though.
It is.
So, I don't even know if that's...
And according to the, the variance in nineteen sixty, it predates our zoning, the use as commercial or...
Yes. So, the criteria here is that the chief building inspector has to certify that the, it's legally pre-existing non-conforming use, which they went to Sean McDermott, and he did look at those CO issues and said, yes.
The current use is legal, existing?
Legally pre-existing. The second criteria is that it's, um, you know, a use you can change to, which special trade contractor is.
It has to be some use within the code, right?
Yeah. So, we don't call it sign company. We just group that under the general category of special trade contractor.
So, that's what they want to be, a sign company?
They want to be a sign company, but it would be under the heading of special trade contractor. So, many times, you're a landscaping company or a special trade contractor, you're a, um, you know, a painting company or a special trade, special trade. So, special trade is special trade, but the building department wants, you can't change your tendency when you have a pre-existing non-conforming use that doesn't, you know, if you're an HB and you want to go from landscaper to sign company, no problem. But because it's zoned R-20, you can't do that.
So, this, then this second, because I'm familiar with the law that we created, because these used to go not to us, but to the zoning board.
Mm-hmm.
So, this second criteria, yeah, it has to be a use that is contemplated within the town, and then it, also, we have to make some sort of finding that the new use is less non-conforming than the old use.
Right. And they have provided in their application, you know, that a sign company is going to be less intense and fewer trucks, equipment...
Okay.
As previous, the previous use. Um, the third criteria is that the use scale and density are consistent, and it is. No one's changing the building, staying exactly the same. It's just who's inside the building. Um, and that, you know, they gave us all the information to move forward, which is item four, which they did. And then it just has a, you know, if you do switch to a new, a new non-conforming use, it's still subject to all these abandonment regulations, et cetera. So, that's the last standard.
Right.
So, the process here is that you just are going to decide whether you're going to elect to consider it. We'll schedule a hearing, and then you can determine, you know, take an action. And then this is actually, something can be improved administratively, like, because they're not increasing the parking or any other, um, they're not making any physical changes.
I mean, I'm just concerned they're going to lose all of their parking.
So, yeah, so we have to have a public hearing.
Yeah, after a hearing and a resolution.
After a hearing, I could even have the resol, if you're inclined, the resolution could be on the same night even, just change, approving the change from one to another, then we'll handle it. But, I mean, this one's pretty easy.
And what, notice?
I'm a hundred percent in...
Are we going to notice the immediate neighbors?
Oh, yeah, that's all part of the, uh, yep.
I'm a hundred percent in support of having a public hearing. I, you know, listen, I've been in and around zoning for a good portion of my life. This property should not be residentially zoned, in my opinion. It should be commercially, nobody, nobody, you can't live there. That's, that's not a habitable property, and it's, you know, you're next to a commercial property. It, this really should be rezoned, and, I mean, we can consider that at a later date and make it as actually a conforming lot, so that the operator, um, doesn't have to deal with those abandonment issues. It can be treated as a conforming property, but for now, um, I have no issues with this.
Agreed, yeah.
Great. So, on your next agenda, I'll have...
Yeah, no, I just noted that, you know, we were currently looking at North Sea Road when them doing the repaving in the sidewalks, and this is another business that could potentially lose all of their on-street parking if we were to, if the county decides to put sidewalks through here.
But they have some onsite parking there, too, right?
They have onsite parking, and they say, and they say that they're not needing as much parking, so that's a bonus as well. If the county would look at parallel parking...
It wasn't a comment on them, it was just more...
Maybe we can talk to the county about, like, parallel parking along there, you know?
You guys keep going.
That would be good.
All right.
Have we seen that plan yet?
And then, yeah, but then my only other, my only other question I had is, like, in the case of you brought up Dan's Papers, that we had currently, the other one we changed in non-conforming use of, and we had stated on that application that there could be only one tenant, and that was how it was going to be less...
Non-conforming.
Yes.
Right.
Right after we approved that, there's currently signs there for rentals of apartments, I mean, not apartments, of retail space or office space.
Well, that would clearly be in violation of your approval.
And, but I brought this to somebody's attention, so how, how do you, how do you, you know...
Did I reach out to the owner of the property?
We can do covenants, uh, when you do these approvals, require a covenant, so we have an added layer of protection there. Um, so it's even easier in justice court.
Okay.
Because I'm just, that's my only concern, is if we're going to do it and we're going to say it has to be, you know, more conforming, and then we don't follow through on what they're doing to be, I understand this one is kind of like, it is what it is, because it's still going to be one use and it's going to be...
Yeah.
But on, in that case, it was supposed to be, there was supposed to be one tenant, and now they're leasing out.
We would need to be careful with this.
Yeah, that's an issue, and we may have required a covenant on that one, so we should look into that.
Okay.
Yeah.
And other applications cannot influence this one.
No, 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 I'm just, that wasn't even about this. I'm just asking that question as an aside.
Yeah, so if you want conditions on any of these, uh, I would always recommend that added layer of, um, a deed or covenant restriction that, that, you know, so we always have that.
Yeah.
But in this case, I don't see the need for that, but in the other one, you may have already required that, and then we would seek some remedy there if they're not complying with your approvals.
And I like the idea of, of changing this to something that, that suits them, so they don't have to come back to us if they get a new tenant for something that fits in Danlet.
Yeah, they do this every time they get a tenant.
Business or...
So, yeah, so it's special trade contractor, no matter what, but as long as it's found to be, um, compliant, then...
Yeah, so you'll, I mean, one step at a time. So, let's, let's do the public hearing. You'll bring the resolution forward.
Um, the resolution that you will see on your next agenda is that you're electing to consider it and setting the hearing.
Yes.
Then you'll have the hearing, and then you'll make a decision.
Right. And that'll solve the problem for now, and then, long-term, I, I think, you know, Judge, if you want to advise your client to come in for a zone change, I think it might be met favorably.
There's no question, this is a unique piece of property, right?
You might, somebody might claim spots, you know, you never know that, whether you're going to get resistance, but let's do it one step at a time.
It's pre-existing, and it did, it got a variance in nineteen sixty, right? So, it's, it has a tortured, as far as zoning is concerned, a tortured history in it. But you're absolutely right, we'll have Mr. McCully redo that with the client and maybe go to the zone, but for practical reasons, outright, obviously, we're going through the change here.
Yeah, they did try to get a building permit for roof repairs for the, and then that's where they got kind of caught up.
Sure.
So, uh, it would be good to do it sooner than later, before the winter, so they can meet their necessary...
He can fix his roofs.
Yeah. Okay, great.
We just want to get a rock and operating.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you want to...
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
So, yes, you're good. So, yeah, I...
Yes.
Yeah. Where are they?
Those papers are...
Okay, so, yeah, so excuse the interruption before I, that was Ryan Murphy. You know, we are in this state of emergency, and if I, Ryan is the incident commander at the moment, so if he calls me or the police call me, I will have to take the call. Just, you know, he was just sort of updating me. Um, pretty much the same things that I, I had said earlier, they're going to try to do something by the commercial dock as well. But, um, they're running into some issues with moving sand, because the sand, it's, the heavy equipment can get stuck in the soft sand there. But, uh, they're doing, they are building the sand up on both sides of the house, the dune, and they're going to build some sand up in front and some sand behind, uh, to try to get a continuous dune line there the best they can. Um, but I'll, I'll try to keep you guys updated as, uh, the day progresses. All right, um, I have some emergency orders to sign. I'll do that in one second. What is next on our agenda?
Updates.
Oh, just updates. Okay. Um, so you know about the overwash, pre-breach conditions. Um, let me see, I have a few other things here. The town applied for a grant award from FEMA to prepare design documents and construction cost estimates for the elevation of the eastern section of Dune Road from Ponquag Bridge to Shinnecock Inlet. The town was recently notified that has been awarded four hundred, sorry, forty-five thousand toward this effort. The design documents and construction estimates will be part of the full project funding grant application to be submitted to FEMA by the town in 2024. Yesterday, I had the East End Supervisors and, and Mayor's Association. There's actually a nice presentation by what used to be called the East End Food Institute, which is now called the East End Food Hub. Um, and Kate Fulham, or from our planning board, um, is the director of that organization. She did a really good job. Uh, they're building a whole new facility, right? They've been operating out of the college, but, uh, up in Riverhead, it's, it's really a, a great plan. Maybe one day we'll have them present here, uh, what they're doing. Um, a lot of talk about traffic regionally and how we can work together to address some of the traffic issues. And, uh, we had updates from Assembly and from Fred Thiel and from Al Kropfsky and Richard Fleming at the County Legislature. And as you know, that sales tax increase that would have brought in money for water quality, um, that did not get through the County Legislature. So, that will not be on the ballot this year.
And not for a special either?
Yeah, no.
I heard that they were talking...
No, no, that doesn't sound like that.
Not even for a special election at some point?
Yes.
Okay. That's too bad.
So, I, yesterday, I attended, um, out on Vale Avenue in Riverside Habitat for Humanity, and our Southampton Housing Authority held a wall raising. I know you guys have been to a lot of these. That neighborhood, this is, I think, the fourth or fifth house in that neighborhood that Habitat's been involved with. So, I got to bang some nails, it was actually a lot of fun, and, but it, it also feels pretty good when you're helping build somebody a home. And, uh, Carrotback was there, Curtis Highsmith was there, a number of people were there, members of the board at the Housing Authority were there, Barbara Fair and Helen Burgess. So, it was really, a really nice event. I don't know how long it's going to take to finish the house, but, uh, you know, the four, the, the four walls, the studded walls, the framing is, is up now, and, uh, if you guys get a chance to go drive by or volunteer, it's a really nice thing to do. Last thing I'll mention is the town completed a one-point-four-million-dollar renovation and improvements to Shinnecock Commercial Dock in 2022. Before the work commenced, the town applied for and received a grant award of three hundred thousand from New York State to support this effort. This past week, the town received a check for the full award amount, three hundred thousand dollars, to offset, uh, the costs there. And, uh, you know, we have another project that we're going to consider, um, to expand the parking area for the commercial fishermen and to create some additional public parking in that area, as, uh, well as emergency communications in that area. So, uh, that's something to discuss in the future. And, uh, again, that commercial dock is particularly vulnerable, though, uh, this evening through Saturday in terms of coastal erosion.
That's a great idea. Is the parking lot going to be configured for storage?
Yes.
Because the fishermen and women, you know, they, they use it for storage, the different parking areas or different bins of different boats.
And they were, they were in our meeting, and we actually went through and made sure that everything we were proposing was sufficient.
Good, so their needs are going to be met there.
All right, um, why don't we go to Cindy, if you have any updates?
Um, just a brief one. There is a local nonprofit, Hampton's Trade Education Fund, having a trade expo at the Southampton College this Saturday from eleven to four. The Hampton's Trades Education Fund is looking to fund Southampton College of the Trades Program. Um, their, their dream is to have a vocational school on the Southampton College campus to where they can partner with local contractors and have apprenticeship programs. They could provide housing and have them get on, hopefully, a train station there and go east to work for contractors, which would be amazing. But they are having a trade show for local students and people in the industry this Saturday at the college from eleven to four.
All right, other updates?
So, uh, on the wall raising, we did, last Christmas, I remember buying these gift cards to local breweries, they hand out to the, the neighbors and friends for Christmas, and it was beers for beans or something like that. A lot of the money that was raised was for that home that they're building, and it was great to see that the money, some money came back locally, so it was nice to see that. Uh, Sunday, Cindy and I and Tommy John, um, visited the Anthropologie Task Force picnic. Uh, it was a nice showing. I'm sure we all sat down and made our beads and our prayer beads, said a little prayer for town Southampton, little did we know that we were going to have a breach this week. But it's a nice event, it was a really hot day, so it was a little less attendance, but it's always a good time to, to check out that picnic.
I played Where's Waldo with Councilman Skivoni looking for you. He said he's with, he's with the Methodist, and I was like, what? And I realized you were literally with the Methodist.
I was with the Methodist church, and I was making the prayer, I didn't know I was going to need my glasses to make a prayer bead. So, I let one of the little brown beads roll off the table, and since we couldn't find it, the lady had to go back to the car, look through like a thousand beads to find one more, because there's a specific way to make them. You need the seven days of the week, so you need seven of the same beads to know which day of the week you're praying on. So, when I lost that, it's about an hour-long process.
It wouldn't have been a six-day week without that.
That's it.
Uh, Council, Councilman Skivoni?
Uh, sure. Noax Civic Council had a meeting last night, and our very own Chief Kirnann was there. Uh, did a, a really great job presenting to the community, of course, the concerns of the community focused around a lot of the concerns townwide, namely, traffic and, uh, and, and some crime issues. But I'm really happy to see the chief out and about, meeting with the community members, it's very important. Also, uh, Roundpon, a project that we have been working on for years, it's going to be breaking ground within the next two weeks, and that is on Middle Country, uh, yeah, no, Townline Road in, uh, in Sag Harbor. It's right on the line between unincorporated Southampton and Sag Harbor Village.
Anything else?
Nope.
So...
I'm glad to see the trade expo is there. I think, you know, Southampton College is clearly underutilized, and that, that is a, a good idea, and it would help serve the community well, I think.
So, um, one thing I didn't, I forgot to mention, too, on, was it Saturday? It was Saturday morning in Quag. I, I've been doing this every year, I do a little sort of update. They call it the state of the town. It's not an official state of the town, but I do provide about a one-hour presentation. There's typically like thirty or forty people who attend, and, uh, I try to focus on issues that affect that Quag region, like the FIM project and things like that, or airport noise at Grobreski. So, it was very nice, nicely attended, it was a beautiful day, we held it outside, and, uh, it wasn't filmed or anything, but, uh, it, there were some great questions about different, different issues and, um, you know, tax, the, the tax assessment issues we talked about a little bit with the, uh, market trend freeze and things like that, and, um, just some of the issues affecting that Quag area. I have reached out to the governor's office relatively informally about the trustee issue. I'm going to try to get a more formal response out. I'd like to discuss that in executive session with the board relating to the, uh, you know, the govern, the bill is coming over to the governor, giving us the one-year extension on the trustee tax line issue. And, um, we do need the extension now, because, um, I, I have to submit the budget, and if there is a tax line, it's a very different process than if there isn't a tax line. And, um, you know, I, we don't have, the board has not arrived at a, an agreement with the trustee board as to this memorandum of agreement, which I think is a necessary component of the tax line. Um, I think you have to have that to have the tax line. I, I know President Horowitz disagrees and thinks that it can be done without it, but I don't think it can. I think that, that you, we need a mutual understanding between, between the two boards. So, uh, so I, you know, I wanted to just let you know, I have reached out this to Assembly and Thiel, I've reached out to Senator Palumbo, but I'd like to reach out now more formally in writing and, uh, get this done. If, for some reason, the governor didn't sign, I'm not sure what, how we proceed, it's a legal question.
Mm-hmm.
So, uh, we, we can discuss that in executive session as well. But, uh, by all indications, the governor will allow us the, the additional time to see if we're able to reach an agreement. Uh, it'll be up to the next board to, to sort that out.
And the next board, and the next board of trustees, too.
And the next board of trustees. And the next board of trustees. So the last thing I just want to say is really a thank you to our police and highway and our county executive alone and DPW.
And Ryan Murphy.
Every, Ryan Murphy. Everybody is out there right now trying to buttress the dunes to prepare us for what could be a significant coastal erosion event. I know they're gonna work around the clock, you know, expecting the county to come through with the approval to bring significant amount of resources our way, so that, you know, we can prevent a breach. I, I don't, we're gonna try to prevent a breach. This is a significant event. It's Hurricane Lee, and we're gonna do the best we can. You know, I always worry about the safety of these people when you have heavy equipment, and, you know, we're doing the best we can to make sure that no one gets hurt in an operation like this, and going over safety protocols and things like that. But I just wanted to thank everybody out there, all, all, you know, from the fire marshals to the Bay Constables, to the Highway Department, Charlie McArdle, Highway Superintendent, to, you know, all of the people involved in the operation, public safety folks. It's a big, it's, it's gonna be a big operation. It's gonna be a big operation, and I'll be out there tonight at high tide to monitoring it. And we're gonna do the best we can. We're gonna do the best we can. And God willing, you know...
When is high tide this evening?
Eight o'clock tonight. You know, God, God willing, the storm passes without much effect. But I'd rather be prepared and err on the side of caution and be ready for whatever may come our way. And if we feel like there's vulnerable spots that we, we can shore up, then I think that, that's the right thing to do.
It's gonna be a long weekend. I think we can probably expect some closures on Dune Road. There is a 5K scheduled on Dune Road Saturday morning over the bridge, so the Lions Club in Antebayes should consider taking a look at that, and if it's possible to reschedule, maybe reschedule that.
Okay. So Jim is telling me that the county is also gonna issue an emergency order, correct you?
Yes.
All right. So...
Is the water running underneath the house that's up on stilts, like, under the structure?
It's like a river right now.
Yeah, but under the structure.
It's actually, I think, it's to the side.
It's a little bit to the side.
A little bit to the side, but it literally, I can show you a video. It's like a river coming through there. And so, you know, my call that I got at 7:30 this morning from the Highway Superintendent was that there is a bad breach at that spot. Technically, by definition, probably not a breach, but an overwash. But what's really the practical difference is that will be a major breach if we don't do something now. It's just a matter of time. So one more high tide, and it would be a breach, I believe.
There's more water coming through now than when we dug the cut by hand.
Yeah. Oh, 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 way more. No, no, it's, it's a...
It's, it's a, it's a cut, like...
It's a significant amount of water. It's what happens...
And they have to worry about it underwashing the road.
Every time a wave crosses over the, you know, fairly low beach there, and then it, it just rushes like a river straight through. And, and each time it does, it digs out a little bit more. So, you know, it, it's only a matter of time.
What's the condition of the roadway?
It's flooded, so it's, there's about a foot of water.
But it's not, like, undermined?
Not yet. It's about a foot of water on the road in that location.
This is one of the older houses on the row.
Yeah.
This is the one on stilts.
It's the one on stilts.
I was noticing, yeah, it's, it's placement is actually in the dune line. So it probably predates a lot of our code.
Its placement is in the dune line, and there is no dune in that spot.
Right.
So the, the dune comes on both sides, and then there's a, a drop in the dune, and in this house on stilts, where the dune would be.
Interesting. Okay.
All right. Any other questions about that?
Nope.
All right. So we'll, we'll pray that the storm passes, but we're gonna be prepared just in case. All right. So we have a number of things for executive session. We have contracts, personnel, acquisition, litigation, confidential legal advice. So I will make a motion to end our work session and go into executive session on those items.
Second?
Seconded by Councilman Skivoni, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. We are adjourned for all other purposes.